That's a sad state of affairs for in Vegas.
We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
And Shildes.
Here.
Councilmember Davis is excused. Eight present, one absent.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any proposed additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Rick.
We need to pull item nine C, the wastewater treatment facility biosol and tanker purchase.
Motion to approve a revised agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Shildes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Next, I'll call on Brennae Larson, our city clerk, for consent items.
Mr. Mayor, council, for your approval and information this evening, I have the city council minutes from March 3rd, 25, the planning commission draft minutes from March 5th, 2025, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities draft minutes from March 10th, 25, project number 2503-D, advertisement for bids, the DNR fishing platforms at Robins Island, the Wilmer Township fire agreement, the liquor license renewals, the Civic Center Arena special event by on-sale liquor license holder permit, Green Mill, Wilmer, consideration of Valley Golf of Wilmer Inc.'s on-sale wine liquor license, the 2026 budget calendar, the accounts payable report for 2/27/25 through 3/12/25. For your information, there's also the February 2025 building report, the finance report through 2/28/25, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities finance report for January 2025, and the directors' reports.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shildes.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Open forum. We don't have anybody saying that, okay? We'll go to regular business. Due to some recent disruptions of... Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
At the end.
Maybe this is on the backside.
I don't know where I put it. There it is. Well, that's...
Do you need another copy, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I had it. Okay. Yeah. There was something that Robert.
No. No, that's after... That's at the end.
That is.
Yes.
Okay.
On to regular business.
Okay, I'm sorry for the confusion. We call on Wilmer Municipal Utilities, Jaren Smith and Kevin Marty is here also in regards to the meeting minutes of February 24th.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Look forward to sharing some more information with you and having an opportunity to answer more questions you have. So at the last meeting, you raised some questions about our purchase agreement. And you essentially, the takeaway I got from it is, why did you pick this east side property? It costs more and it's in a weird spot. And that's a common initial reaction. That was my initial reaction too. So to understand how we got here, I'm going to share our mission statement. So Wilmer Municipal Utilities will provide safe, reliable, and quality utility services at competitive rates for their customers. So this property with a $600,000 price tag can meet this mission statement better from the east side property than from the industrial park property because there are huge differences in efficiencies over the long run. We've got 28 employees and we've got 20 vehicles for those employees. The nature of our work is to travel throughout the city. If a storm rolls in at night, pushes a tree into a power line, our staff has to commute into our service center and then they need to respond to the incident. And it's not just one vehicle. We work in crews. So we have to have multiple staff come into our service center, multiple staff go out to the service location. Same process for water. If there's a water main break, our crews need to commute into the office building and then respond to the incident. The bigger the incident, the more vehicles, the more travel time. And I don't know, every one of our staff has caught themselves on the wrong side of the tracks in our current location and we only have one track to cross. That industrial park site has three tracks to cross. There's three out of the four directions to get out of that site has to cross railroad tracks. Our response time matters. So you know the old adage, the only thing worse than your light's not working is the toilet not flushing. You know, that's our responsibility is to get that working for you guys. So I just want you to keep this in mind for tonight's discussion. We've got multiple vehicles and multiple trips for each event that we need to deal with. Now I'll back up a little bit and summarize that letter that's included in your packet. So at the top, you'll see that we met with city staff March 10th and presented cost estimates for city wastewater and wastewater services as well as private services. After some discussion, it was the request of city staff to develop a pros and cons list for the Wilmer Avenue site and the industrial park site. And that's what we have to present to you this evening. The project background section highlights the extensive work we've completed to date. The project really kicked off in 2010. It was slowed a few times for other capital projects. But since 2016, it's been a consistent topic of our conversation throughout committee meetings and commission meetings. It's also been in front of the city council four times each year since 2016 in the annual budget, the annual audit, our annual tour, and the annual WMU update to the city council. We've evaluated over 20 properties here in Wilmer and we've got contingencies written into this purchase agreement to ensure that the project will only proceed if satisfactory agreements can be reached so that we can continue to accomplish our mission of providing safe, reliable, and quality utility services to this community. So I'm going to hand it out to Kevin to talk a little more about our site criteria.
Thank you. Thanks for having us again. I hope I'm right. It's having a good day. We'll go through the site criteria a little bit, comparisons of properties. The first document after Jaren's opening letter in the packet was the property purchase comparison form. We've talked quite a bit in the past about our site criteria. This is the list of the site criteria that we have scored properties against and used to vet properties in the past. So I'm not going to go word for word, but we can just maybe highlight some of the ones that kind of jump out at us a little bit more. The first one, maneuverability for large vehicles, the second one down. The... That includes within, not only within the property being equal, we can design the yards to move trucks, those kind of things, but getting to and from the property easily. And we feel that the Wilmer Avenue property meets those needs better. Access to arterial streets, as Jaren mentioned, three to four of the directions from the industrial park property, you have to deal directly with railroad tracks. The fourth or the other option is to use Highway 12, which is a busy road, has multiple stop signs. We know that that road is set for a project, a reconfiguring, reconstruction project in what we see as the short term and may go from a four lane through town down to a two lane with center turn lanes and some reduction of traffic controls. Avoiding heavily trafficked areas likewise, getting away from Highway 12 and County Road 5, we feel that the Wilmer Avenue property is the better option. We've already covered the railroad crossings. Access to our service territory, we feel that, and we'll touch on that in a map here in a few minutes, that we feel that the Wilmer Avenue property has a little bit, has an advantage there also. Obviously, it has advantage to the bypass. Customer access, we feel that the Wilmer Avenue property, once again, is better than the industrial park because customers don't have to go into that industrial park and that said traffic to find us when they need it. Zoning requirements, obviously, the industrial park property has an advantage there along with proximity to existing utilities. The facility design flexibility, we've always tried to find a parcel that we could design, building that best fits our needs rather than best fits to fit the property. One, that's one of the hugest reasons that we stopped looking at our adjacent properties downtown through the years is because we're very constricted in those properties, you know, the 7th to 10th Street adjacent to where we currently exist. Both can be designed without parking. Optimized land use. A lot of that had to do with staying away from retail residential areas if at all possible and avoiding locations that would limit commercial or industrial expansion. A lot of the properties that we've looked at are, we've looked at four or five different ones in industrial park. And when they've had other interests or first rate of refusals, for example, we've never tried to bridge that and impede on other people's commercial expansion. Clean energy potential, obviously, the Wilmer Avenue property having more useful space gives us those advantages to build out clean energy initiatives as part of the site design. And then consideration for future service expansion. We feel that with the city kind of moving more towards the north corridor and in the east, this opportunity sets the Wilmer Avenue property ahead of industrial park. Questions on this sheet before we go to the maps?
Hi. I do have a question. The color coding on this, is green good, orange square okay, and red X bad? Is that kind of the general gist of that?
Yes. We actually have a number system in the background of this, one through five. One being the red X, two and three being the orange square, four and five being the green check. That's just how we've scored them in the past. We just felt it would be a little less muddy to show you the... Excuse me, the general one. So each of these properties has actually, does actually have a numerical score as well.
Okay. How many can I ask? I have lots of questions. How many can I ask?
Go ahead.
Okay. This won't be painful, I promise. Optimal land use thing in here, you gave the industrial park a, apparently a score of a two or a three. And one of the locations is, choose locations not near retail or residential areas. So you gave Wilmer Avenue, must have been a four or a five, that is parked right next to one of the newest housing developments that will likely be in town someday. But you gave the industrial park a lower score even though it's in an industrial area, not near a retail or housing development. Can you explain your rationale behind that?
The... We did. We looked at the site and what we anticipate designing on the Wilmer Avenue site and the space that's out there. It's kind of got that natural buffer. Directly to the, well, obviously to the west, it's got the bypass. To the north, there's a creek that runs through there and some area that we would intend to leave as wildlife. And then you're on the backside of those homes. It's quite a bit. Directly to the east, it's got that low land, that pond area. I don't anticipate that being developed. We'd love to have it as is because it's a nice wildlife space. So as far as impeding on residential, yes, that one, Wilmer Avenue, is a little bit closer, obviously, than industrial park.
Yet you scored it higher.
Correct. We scored it higher because the, it's, we feel like it's adding space to Wilmer. I think I mentioned that a couple of weeks ago. Rather than taking away valuable space, that's part of the criteria for that score is that we're not taking away space from anybody else that needs to be in industrial park or, you know, has that type of a business.
That's noble. You guys have mentioned your efficiency study multiple times. Did somebody do an efficiency study? And if so, where is that data? Can we see it? And was the data subjective or objective in nature? Like, you talk about response times. Did you clock response times from your facility to different places within town to get objective data? Do you know how many times a day the train goes through? Was the study done before or after the Y project went in? Because rail traffic is significantly reduced since the Y project went in?
Right. The study was completed both times by GLT architects in St. Cloud, from St. Cloud. The second time was in 2016, so would have been probably during early planning stages of the Y. They used data from, they interviewed all employees and all departments to, you know, how many times a day, for example, do you go from the service center down on 10th Street to the office on 7th Street? And they took those employees, it takes you X amount of minutes to drive it, multiply it by their, you know, average loaded wages, add the mileage. Likewise, to multiple locations that we travel daily in town. We mostly looked at, it's hard to be really objective with that because we don't know where an outage is going to occur. But we know that we have to, that the water people have to go to the southwest water plant and the northeast water plant and the Wilmer Avenue tower, for example. We know that the line department needs to go to substations and different things within town. So that's the data that was used in that 2016 study to identify that. I know that we do have those facility studies. And then we took by radius, by moving the facility, you know, one mile away from, at that time, the power plant was still in play, or two miles away or three miles away. So we tried to encompass the radius of the city Wilmer, which is roughly three miles, give or take. I know that just alone, the efficiency, just by moving all the employees into one building that are three blocks apart, at that time, was somewhere in the $15,000 to $18,000 a year savings. That was in 2016. So we're pushing 10 years on that now. So we'd anticipate that today to maybe be $17,000, $18,000, $20,000 savings per year. Just that back and forth that you do daily, you know, the meter guys running up to check customer service and back and forth.
So let's do it as $20,000 a year, right? So it would take you 30 years to pay for this piece of land you could get for free?
That would only account for the employees. That wouldn't count savings and travel times and those kind of things. We have looked at, we've timed more, not quite scientifically, but we've gone out and timed our time when we were looking at properties, the Mendot property, the Midwest property. And we drove those using the bypass to, let's say, obviously, you're going to get the Menards quicker from Mendot using the bypass than you would through town. We chose other locations as well, different substations and those kind of things. And that's pretty easy to see that, obviously, one location has great advantages over the other. And then you add in the trains, that's a wild card. There's no way to know. You know, we didn't reach out to Burlington Northern and say, how often are the train tracks plugged up? But I do know that from my time living in town and my nearly 20 years on the fire department, that when we respond, that's, I think that our biggest thing that we're, why we chose this site, as Jaren mentioned, is our ability to respond to the city when there's outages. When we do that, when the fire department goes out, for example, and the call is at Ridgewater College, you don't go down Highway 12 and go across the tracks at five. You just don't. You take the bridge. Likewise, in different areas of town, you plan for those things. When you work near railroad tracks, Jaren lives in Spicer, I can guarantee you, he never takes a left out of our office building to go over the tracks. Likewise, when he comes in the morning, he goes over the bridge. So you plan to respond to the road you know is open. The roads we know are open are better served on the east side of town than the industrial park property.
We, we serve this city. And so we're oftentimes...
I'm not debating that, Jaren, at all.
We're, we're known as, we oftentimes are in the industrial park and we're oftentimes in other locations. And we know when we hit the drain, you know, it takes longer, it slows you down. And when you want...
I'll put the mic, please.
Sorry. When, when time matters, which it does in our, in our business, we don't want to run into that. Three out of the four directions we go. And we can measure, you know, statistically, what that is and prove a place of value on it. We haven't done that yet. We've done parts of that, yes. But it's significant enough for us to say, this is a better choice.
And I do have, if you want to maybe hold that thought when we get to the last map, I've got some data, some outage data and some things that we can look at.
Appreciate it.
That kind of showed that better.
Audrey has...
Yeah, I know. I've been aware of that. Audrey, go ahead. I want to ask you some questions too, but I'll wait till Audrey's done.
Thank you. I have some questions about Wilmer Avenue in general. And while I understand when you have an emergency, you take the shortest distance between two points. My concern is that you'll take the shortest distance between two points when you're not having an emergency. And there's enough traffic on Wilmer Avenue, whether it's, you know, whether you're coming from Lakeland Drive or you're taking 19th Avenue. That residential area has two expanded, both 19th Avenue have additional senior housing. Bethesda has a big project there. My concern is the additional traffic on a regular basis, not an emergency basis, but a regular basis that would be using that. And the, and the truth is, we take the shortest distance between two points. And so that's my concern is I don't see that your regular or your employees are going to use the bypass. They're going to take the shortest distance between two points. And so that's one of my concerns about that location. And just being outside of the city in general. So any comments on that one?
Thank you. Yes, it's a legitimate concern and I appreciate that. I'm not sure where I should look to directly look at you. I'll look at this. So it is a legitimate concern. Today, how we operate, you know, we are leaving from 10th and Benson Pacific area out of the service center. And we're mostly driving either on Highway 12, which is another busy road, or going through town and on more residential streets, 10th Street Southwest to get to Trot Avenue, which is not as nice as Wilmer Avenue with the improvements made. We like Wilmer Avenue, of course, because it's been widened. It's much safer than it used to be. It will be a training piece too, to get employees to remember that they've got really good access to the bypass and to use it. We feel that unless you're directly going into the center of town, like obviously to the Southwest Water Treatment Plant or the water tower, we're going to go down Wilmer Avenue. We're going to be on Wilmer Avenue regardless when we're responding to that. There's a lot of options to take a right or left on Lakeland or a right or left on the bypass. So it just gives us, we feel more options to respond and spread from that location.
I honestly like the location for one reason. And that's, I've always wondered what's going to be the catalyst to get us beyond the bypass with the city limits. However, can you tell me what our cost is going to be, this city property? What our cost is going to be for that property, for the infrastructure that needs to be put in? Because I think, we need to know that if we're going to move ahead with this. I would be, if I was a council member making the decision, I would be nervous to make the commitment without knowing what the cost is going to be.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great question, and I can't answer that today. And the plan has always been that we sign the purchase agreement, that doesn't mean we close on the property. We sign the purchase agreement, we enter our due diligence phase. In that due diligence phase, we identify that number. And we determine if we can get an agreement in place that's favorable to our mission and favorable to the mission of the city. And if we don't, the, the purchase agreement becomes null and void and we don't take that next step of closing. So that, this is part of the process that we need to get beyond this point that, okay, we're able to buy this property. Now, does it make sense to buy this property? If that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
I can maybe add to that a little bit. We, you know, we mentioned last time too, and there's been numbers floating around, that we do have an engineer's estimate to get to the site, to service the site. A question that was asked a couple of weeks ago is, what was that system designed for? So we did reach out to Mr. Vogi and that lift station and infrastructure to get across, there's two things to it. When you look at it, you're wondering like, why does it take this goofy, this goofy route and go under the road where it does? And that has to do with that's the shortest amount of distance to get underneath the highway with the casing. If we went straight down Wilmer Avenue, for example, we're driving casing underground across not only the bypass, but also the 600 plus or minus speed on each side of the bypass that is Mendot right of way. So it's actually significantly higher price to go straight down Wilmer Avenue than it is to take the path that it was drawn at. Secondly, that 2.6, 2.7 million, for example, or that estimate, a portion of that is the, the utilities responsibility as we're responsible by agreement for water main construction. I think 800, and I've got it here somewhere, 850 some thousand, 880,000 is water. Of that estimate is water main, purely our expense. So if the city was going to expand regardless of us going there for any other reason, we're still going to have that expense. The last piece of that is the question was asked, you know, what is that going to service in the future? And that lift station and system was designed, I threw out 100 acres last time. It's actually designed for 445 acres of future development that that lift station will accommodate. So when you're looking out into that future, you know, wanting to jump the bypass, expand the city, those kinds of... expand the city, those kinds of things, it gives you an idea of what that lift station and that initial investment upfront is going to service in the future.
Was that plan for the lift station across the bypass from the north side of that proposed property? Just a minute, Audrey. Was somebody over there? No? Okay. Audrey, go ahead.
I guess as a council member, I don't see that the city has money to do this right now. My concern is, if we have to do this, what won't we be able to do? Whether it's streets or whether it's other things. But I also understand, you know, I heard the comment was made, well, the utilities, what if the utilities pays all of it? And you bond for it or, or so that you make the payments for it. But somewhere that money has to come from, and does that mean you would raise rates? And you, you are the city. And so I find frustration in us now having to go through this process. You very nicely asked us before about land that you looked at and how would it work? And some of those types of things that I, I feel like you truly put the cart before the horse with this one. And I, I just don't see that the city has money to do this right now. At the same time, I have been an advocate for us to look at, should we be annexing land? Do we provide services to Eagle Lake? You know, is there other places we should be looking at? But this is just kind of like, well, what about this? And I find that very frustrating and concerning. And I feel like all the Ts aren't crossed and the Is aren't dotted on this. And so I don't know how to support this right now.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for city attorney, by the way. Nice tie, Robert. Thank you for being festive. It's been mentioned a couple of times that the purchase agreement that's in place has contingencies. And, I mean, wise to do that, that if we're not meeting certain, certain levels of satisfaction, that that agreement is null and void, if agreements can't be reached. My question is, who determines if we're satisfied? And if we move this forward at this point from the city council, is the city council still involved in determining that level of satisfaction in the future? Or have we given, have we kind of signed off on that and we're moving on without city council seeing this back on the agenda? Does that make sense?
I believe so, Mayor, council member, members of the council. It's generally true for any contingency in a real estate purchase agreement that the party benefited by that contingency has the ability to waive it. So if your question is, could WMU waive any of these contingencies and proceed to closing anyway? Sure, it could do that. Excuse me. There's, it's probably helpful, each of these contingencies is a little different, which is why I'm kind of struggling to answer the question. Some of them are things that really are in the city's control. One of the contingencies in this agreement is that not only does the WMU board approve the purchase agreement, but that the city council not exercise its overriding authority with it. So that's the stage we're at right now. That's something that, obviously, if the council determines to exercise its overriding authority and reject the purchase agreement, then that contingency cannot be satisfied, and it goes away. The purchase agreement goes away. Some of the other contingencies are really to benefit the buyer here, which is WMU. The contingency for discussions over infrastructure extension is the important one that I think is the subject of a lot of the discussion. That contingency allows the buyer, WMU, to decide not to go to closing if it has not successfully negotiated an agreement with the city for extension of the infrastructure or received permits from either the city or the township or county for private services on the site. Either of those approvals, agreement for infrastructure extension or a permit for private services are secured, WMU would be able to go to closing. And even if it weren't able to get those, it would have the ability to waive that contingency and proceed to closing. Thinking through this, your question about what involvement would the city council have in the future? I do think the annexation piece is important. It's been my opinion and my position that if WMU does close on this purchase, whether all the contingencies are satisfied or whether they waive some of them, the moment it becomes WMU-owned, it is city-owned for purposes of the orderly annexation statute in abutting the city. Across the state bypass right of way would allow that property to be annexed by the city council if you so chose. So in that sense, I think the city would still have some involvement here, which, which is the city having the ability to bring it into its jurisdiction and then control some of that permitting.
So I guess what I'm really asking is, we've raised numerous concerns and questions, and we've, we've heard that, you know, this is all built into the purchase agreement. There's contingencies for this, just, just pass the purchase agreement and let's move on to the next phase. What I'm concerned about is that that next phase does not include this council. That once we move this forward, we're not part of the conversation anymore. That that land can be purchased without us and without our involvement. Is that inaccurate?
That is an accurate statement as far as the land being purchased. There is some still potential city council involvement through the ability to annex the site if that does occur and WMU does close on the purchase of the property. And through annexation then becoming the, you know, permitting authority for any of the development there.
Yep, okay, thank you. And I just, I think that's why I at least am not comfortable moving, moving forward until those issues are resolved. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think he's got to go through this next. He wants to go through the site. You're keeping going, right?
Yeah, we've got more stuff.
All right, go ahead, Kevin.
Sorry. So, moving on, we were asked by city staff to create pros and cons for each site, and I just put a map of each site and some general info. The first one obviously being parcel one on Wilmer Avenue. It's twenty-seven acres approximately in size. Out of that twenty-seven, there's twenty-four and a half usable acres, and that's just cutting out that property north of that creek. Pros, like we've mentioned numerous times, we feel it has efficient access, lots of options for responding to the city, design flexibility, being positioned as it is within the city and service territory for long-term planning and growth. Economic development contributing to the infrastructure costs can stimulate that growth in that area and aesthetic value. The cons, obviously, I would think we'd all agree that it's not in city limits, and that the, the big argument that we're hearing is that it lacks city services. Property two, the industrial park, the pros there is that it's not actually, it's somewhat of a misstatement saying that it's shovel-ready, because it's not certified shovel-ready, I believe. But we're assuming that it's a lot easier to build on than the Wilmer Avenue site. We've got to go through a little bit more hoops to build out there, make sure soils are good. Obviously, water and wastewater availability are close. The cons is the congestion of the response options, either having to pick a busy highway that's become challenging to get on or not having, or railroad tracks and then not having that bypass access. It also has limited room for expansion. It's twenty-two acres total, including all six parcels as outlined there, but roughly only eighteen of it are usable. Some of the space just isn't very conducive to building on, and that may be why it's been available for as long as it has been. And then the last map is our service territory view. And there's what I'm going to try and answer the second half to Mr. Gardner's questions earlier. So I was interested in the last week or so, three or four in the morning sometimes, about where our outages are. Do we, one of these sites have an advantage over the other? Were we actually talking about an outage? And I only mapped out the electrical outages because water call-ups typically are water main breaks, and I just didn't have time to get that data. And they also don't respond with as big of equipment and whatnot. So in 2024, there was fifty-nine total outages. And I do have a map here if you would like to see one as well. If you'd like them. So there's fifty-nine total outages in 2024. Out of those, forty-four of those are what we call is a sustained outage. So an outage can be as something as simple as a trip at a breaker at a substation. You'll notice that, for example, on the northeast substation, if you know where our northeast substation, there was like six outages attributed at that substation. So a piece of equipment trips, it does a self-test, doesn't see an issue, it flips back on. So you'll get that flicker in your lights at home or the split second off. The forty-four sustained outages is when we actually have power out at, for our customers. That, those numbers are fairly consistent. I went back, I had time to go back through seventeen. The sustained outages going back from twenty-four, twenty-four, obviously at forty-four, then we go backwards to twenty-three at fifty-one, fifty-four, thirty-one, forty-nine, thirty-four, forty-five, and fifty-three. So those average outages are fairly consistent. Each one of those black dots on that map is where the outage location was. We feel that we can respond to almost every one of these outages more efficiently, taking railroad crossings into effect and traffic from the Wilmer Avenue site than we can from, from the industrial park site. This is one of the reasons that this industrial park site has kind of been set aside for four to five years now. There's, out of those fifty-nine total outages, forty-four of them being sustained, there is one of the outages that occurred in industrial park that we could immediately respond to from the industrial park site. Every other one, we'd either be reliant on a railroad crossing or using Highway twelve. I mentioned, I was on the fire department for nineteen years. There's always been discussions about, I can remember back when I first got on, about a substation for the fire department. You know, where would that go if we were to build one? And this north area that we're sitting on right now was always identified as a good site to put a, a second fire station, for example, how to respond. The police station is out here. I feel that they probably could tell you that they do a really nice job responding from here because of the options that they have to respond. The ambulance garage is centrally located within town. We are a service industry, kind of like they are. I'm not saying that we wear pagers and have lights and sirens, but when the lights are out, we feel like we have to respond in somewhat in the same way, as quick as we can, as efficiently as we can. We don't, we, we aren't having discussions about putting a fi, a new fire station or a police station or an ambulance garage, if we were going to build one, into industrial park. We just wouldn't have that discussion, I feel. So that's kind of why I put that map together, to kind of show you where we do go and where we do respond. Our response area, also the yellow outlines are city property, and we do have a response area that goes outside of those lines. We're, we're really in a nutshell, we're, I hope that kind of answers some of your questions, Mr. Gardner, unless you've got some follow-up. But really in a nutshell, we're, we understand that it's a burden, right, on onset. It's a big hurdle to get across. The cost of extending these city services across the bypass is not cheap, and we understand that. There is another option in the interim to allow us to get in there, and then we could work with the city. City staff had mentioned that they would want to maybe do some, some studies. You know, what does it look like to annex in more property on the east side of town? You know, that's not something that you can decide overnight. So, you know, that takes time. It takes, you've got to, you've got to poll those people out there. You know, how interested are you in being part of the city? What is that, what does that plan look like? That could be a five-year, ten-year, twenty-year project down the road to make all those kind of things happen. So we're, we're looking long-term for our, our own response and needs and not just being, trying to be focused on the fact that, yes, it's expensive.
Mr. Scott, you advise both the Wilmer Municipal Utilities and the city. And this is for information only, but what, what is the action here?
Well, Mayor, council members, it strikes me, the council has, I guess, three options tonight. We're sitting here, it's been two weeks since the council passed the resolution to give itself thirty days. The charter contemplates that I think that can be extended to the next council meeting, and you have the extra week in March, so I believe you can still act on this on April seventh. Which means that tonight, if the council has heard enough information and is comfortable approving the minutes and approving the action the board took to enter into this purchase agreement, certainly the council could do that tonight. I guess similarly, if the council just has heard enough and knows it doesn't support this location, you could take action to exercise your overriding authority tonight. You also have the option, given that the charter contemplates thirty days or the next council meeting, to request additional information and make your decision at your next council meeting.
I got the impression, when I asked the question of Jaren, that if we pass it, it still is open for debate and whether we pass it with the amount of dollars that the city is going to have to lay out. I, I need to understand that.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe I can clarify. So, council member asked, you, you made a very important distinction that if the council does pass this, there, there isn't another opportunity for the council to prevent the purchase of the property. And, you know, from my perspective, as the Wilmer Municipal Utilities General Manager, the reason that we put those contingencies in place into the purchase agreement was so that if we can't meet our mission statement, if it's cost prohibitive to not proceed in this site, we won't do it. We won't do it just because, you know, because we don't have the evidence, the facts, the figures to support it. And so my intent all along was to not move forward if we don't have favorable agreements. But I do understand your position that you guys don't have another opportunity after this point. So I hope that clarifies in answer to your question.
Well, I, I, I don't know what the council's going to do, but as mayor, I'm uneasy going into it without knowing what our costs are going to be. Now, you said earlier that this is a process, but I got the impression that when we hear the costs, we could back out of this situation.
Wilmer Municipal Utilities can, but it sounds like, as Mr. Scott pointed out, we would have the ability to waive those contingencies. I don't see a path where we would want to do that, but that, that is true. I think what, what I hope to maybe explain is that, yes, there's a lot of unanswered questions, and that is because we still need to have those conversations, and we've always planned to have those conversations. But if, you know, we put all of our resources and time, city staff, utility staff, to come together on agreement for wastewater infrastructure development, and then we go to the landowner and they say, I'm not selling that, or- and they say, I'm not selling that, or $5 million and it's yours, now we got to backpedal. So getting this purchase agreement in place was a known amount of effort, and it was the easiest thing to do first as a step one. So I, I get where you're at. I hopefully, I hope you understand, we're not trying to, to sneak this by you or to get you to say yes and then, you know, pull a fast one on you. It's just the step that is the most efficient, and, and that's why we're in this spot.
Yeah, I'm, Audrey and Justin, but I need to have that answered before I'm comfortable with it. Okay, Audrey first.
I think what I'm hearing is, and I, and I believe staff also, from my conversation, to take advantage of the next two weeks to try and clarify, clarify some additional things. And while, I just think there's a lot of unanswered questions yet, and I don't know how we can move forward. And the trust me factor right now is a little hard for me to accept. So I would ask, I guess I would feel better if we take advantage of the additional time and try to cross some more Ts and dot some more Is for us to make a decision.
Justin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Scott, you mentioned that you, I think you used the words like, you thought we could take the extra time. Can you confirm that?
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor members of the council, I, the fact is the language in the charter is a little ambiguous. It says the council has the right to extend its time to consider inaction. The WMU board is taken by a time not to exceed 30 days or the next council meeting. And I'm just giving you my best interpretation of that language. And I guess if WMU feels differently, I'd appreciate hearing that. But the fact that the charter mandates the council meets twice every month, for them, for that language to really mean anything, 30 days or the next council meeting, to me is a provision to extend that 30 days to the next time the council meets after that, as opposed to a provision that would essentially mean that you could never reach 30 days because it would at most be three weeks after the council exercises out authority. It's a legal interpretation of language that isn't 100% clear.
So...
Go ahead, Jaren.
My response to Mr. Scott's question is I would defer to Mr. Scott to interpret that for us, so what he's saying, says goes for both of us.
It's wise. Can I just finish?
Just want to make sure everyone's on the same page when we're talking timelines and something like this.
I also just want to say, like, I can appreciate, like, when you're making a big purchase like this, what things do you do first? You know, how do you, how do you enter into a purchase agreement, you know, when you want to talk to these different players and which one goes first? But I, I think in hindsight, you attempted or are attempting to purchase land outside of the city limits. You're attempting to do that while assuming that the city would support it. You're attempting to do it assuming that the city would spend significant amount of taxpayer money to get utilities out there. You're attempting to do that assuming city growth patterns. I've, I've heard lots of talk about how the city's growing in that direction from you guys, and that, that we were looking to add space to Wilmer. And so it, it strikes me as odd that in the course of, you know, contemplating this land purchase, that you didn't talk to city administrators, you didn't talk to the city planning department, you didn't talk to EDC, you didn't talk to the planning department, the planning commission, you didn't talk to township, you didn't talk to county. It, it's hard to, you know, as council member Nelson said earlier, like, it's hard to have that trust me factor. And so I think as, as we again continue to exercise that, that 30 days, like, I hope we can have some of those conversations now and, and try to come up with some agreements there.
You didn't address that real quickly about the not talking to the entities. We actually have been discussing this with the entities that you've mentioned since October, 1st of October.
Not this particular property?
We, I've, I've got notes in my office with phone calls that I've had with Mr. Fox, with Mr. Odens at the county, the county zoning board, one of the commissioners from Wilmer Township, the state highway department.
So maybe just not the city then? I know I've heard from EDC that there is no communication about this property. Planning direct, director, you have had communication? You have not?
Yeah, not directly with Mr. Corbin. No, it's been, from the city standpoint, it's been with, with Mr. Box. So not the EDC because we didn't feel that that was part of the process, I guess.
Okay. But I've also heard, like, one of the reasons you like this area is, like, there's going to be future growth there. I've heard from EDC staff that they haven't seen growth in that particular part of Wilmer, that they're seeing it actually in, in the western part around industrial park, and they're seeing it in the northeast, but not in the southeast. You know, so, and again, like, some of those things, at least for me and city council, when there's conversations about where is Wilmer growing and what's the growth of the future, the people that I'm frequently listening to are going to be our planning director and our EDC staff, so.
Steve, I, I will point out, speaking of growth, that the area directly south of the property you're proposing to buy is a wildlife management area. There will be no growth there. So, okay, what I'm about, I'm going to preface what I'm about to say with a couple of things. A, I can see property two from my window at work. I drive into the industrial park every single day, all right? I also have a degree in quality management, so stuff like this gets me excited, all right? So you mentioned in your pros and cons that I will, just on a surface read, seem inherently biased. Just first read through it, seemed very biased, but that aside, you mentioned aesthetic value as a pro to property one, which is the Wilmer Avenue property. And you said a nice vantage point and gateway to the city can enhance the site's appeal. Enhance the site's appeal to who? Certainly not the property owners that live on that side that are going to look at an industrial building out their back door.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it gives us a public presence, which is valuable to us, that our community knows that we are a municipal utility and we serve the city that, that we live in and that we're from.
Is that necessary for you guys to function as an entity, that people know you're a public utility?
It didn't make the site criteria, no.
Okay. Second one was economic development, you said, as a pro, contributing to infrastructure costs and stimulate economic growth in the area. Can you explain that?
That's just from the standpoint of what the system is designed to accommodate in the future. You know, if that, if that infrastructure that we put in to get this done is $2.7 million. And if we're contributing to that and, and allowing, giving the city an opportunity to finally jump over the bypass, we just see it as, as working with the city and giving the city, you know, some sort of an advantage or head start in making that happen. I can't answer to what the utility commission is willing to spend above and beyond the, the, the water that we're obligated to do.
Well, let's not get confused. That's not, you, you guys are spending money, but you're, you're spending taxpayer dollars and your customers' dollars, right? So let's not pretend that that's just, you guys are some private organization that have a pile of money. You do, but it's money you collected from people that don't have a choice on where they get your product from, all right? On the con to the industrial park property, you mentioned no bypass access. This limits the ease of access and affects service efficiency. Looking at the map you just gave us, over half of your marks are left or west of First Street. If I leave my office, which I can, and I can, again, I can see property that's proposed out there, you can jump on Highway 12 and you can get to every one of those in less than two minutes. I do it every day. So I don't understand how you're going to get from where, again, where half of your outages were at, from the Wilmer Avenue property halfway across town, faster than you can from that industrial park property? Can you explain that?
You are correct. We actually have multiple listings of responding from each one of these properties to multiple places within town. And yes, the industrial park property, barring no trains, let's call it a perfect day here...
You don't need to see a train leaving here to get across the bridge on 12?
But meets or exceeds response times for a lot of those properties. Likewise, the Wilmer Avenue property meets or exceeds the response times for the others, to the other properties. I have a list, I have it with me, it's handwritten, but this is just one that I put together last week. I have nine different properties that we go to on a relatively normal basis, or they're just strategic properties, the center of town. You know, I use Wolf's Gas Station, for example, a business on South 71, Ridge Water College, we have a water tower there, senior high, those kind of things. One property is faster than the other property, and that goes pretty well down the line. In fact, adding them all up, if I went, if I did a round trip from either one of these properties once a day to the nine properties that I have, it takes me 112 minutes from the industrial park.
What's the purpose of the visits to those properties?
Routine service or maintenance at the Northeast Treatment Plant, for example. The water department, for example, goes to that plant, to the plants usually daily to do water testing and check the equipment. Likewise, from Wilmer Avenue, I think you'll be pleased to hear that it's exactly 112 minutes. So this was not like some big smoking gun to say that Wilmer Avenue site has more advantages. But we're also trying to look at data that is beyond just today. We're trying to look, this is a 50 to 100-year building and property and, and investment for the community. And we're looking at, you know, will we get to Eagle Lake? Will we service that water system? Will we expand to north of Wilmermore in that corridor? Will we take East Highway 12 Business Corridor? So, yes, and there is development happening on the west side of town too, but that's highly industrial on the industrial park and the rail park. We don't have our outages in those areas. That's a very robust system in industrial park. It's almost enti, it is entirely underground. We don't have those kind of outages that we do for the other areas.
Aren't you guys an industrial business? So shouldn't you be in the industrial park?
Yes and no. I would say from the ons, from the looking at us from the outside, our yard and our storage and such fits in quite well with that aesthetic. We're a service business. We service the community with, for water and electric, and we respond to outages. We don't manufacture anything. We don't distribute, build any of the kind of things that happen in industrial park.
FedEx doesn't make anything either, but they're in the industrial park, right? Or a package delivery company. I'm just saying, from the, from the equipment that you operate, the buildings that you're going to build, you talked about a solar farm you wanted to put on the property someday at the last meeting. Wouldn't all those things be better served in the industrial park instead of across the bypass located adjacent to a housing area? That I would guess, if we talked to the planning director, he's going to tell us we would want that property that you're proposing to be a housing development instead of an industrial property. That's all I have.
Since you made this decision back in October, do you feel you have more and better information from when you initially made the decision back in October or January?
Well, we have, obviously, we have better information on infrastructure costs. You know, finally meeting with those folks, we've learned about the annexation process, you know, the, the details of those. Having the discussions with the highway department, we've learned where we can and can't put driveways, right of ways, those kind of things. As far as choosing that property, it hasn't made any difference. This property's been very high on our list for a very long time. We, we pulled it back in. It was always set aside because of the challenge that we're talking about tonight, because it's outside of the city limits, because it's expensive to get water and wastewater to it. That's one of the reasons it was set aside. And we, we investigated, embedded, and worked to purchase those other five properties that just didn't work out. This property scores quite a bit better than the industrial park property. If you want to vote this one down, we'll go back to the drawing board, and there's other properties that are better, in our opinion, in our scoring system than industrial park. We would have to investigate those. They have some traffic issues. You know, our next best one comes to mind has a, we feel, a significant traffic issue. It has bypass access. It just, they score differently depending on...
So you have not received any additional information, feedback, comprehensive plan, that information that would change your mind at this point in time?
No. Our discussions with the people, like I mentioned before, that we've talked to have always been positive for this site, from the landowner to the city engineer, to the county, to the, anybody that we've spoken to. We've never been told absolutely not, can't go there, it's going to be too challenging. We've had those discussions with other sites, that's why we moved on from them, and not this site.
Tom B., then Audrey.
I'd like to make a motion to reject the purchase agreement for Wilmer Municipal Utilities on parcel 330130380.
We have a second. We have a second. Motion fails, lack of second. All right, Audrey, go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you. You made a couple of comments about all the people you've talked to, but, and I did ask, and I, I believe I was told, and, and Mr. Box can address that, but how many times did you talk to the city administrator? Have we looked at other land in the industrial park? Some of the comments you just made about how long you've been talking about this still clarifies to me that you excluded the city in the conversation. So how many times did you talk with the city?
I believe I had to refer back to my notes. I don't have those with, but I want to say there are four or five times I had conversations with Mr. Box. Why, I guess, we chose to talk to Kyle rather than Ms. Valiant, I, I can't answer that. He's the operations director. It made most sense to have those initial conversations at that place. And I guess we're assuming that he's letting Ms. Valiant know that we're having those discussions. Likewise, the conversations with Mr. Vogi, I think at least two or three times I've spoken with him about the options for this site. They've always been very, I have to commend Mr. Box for these conversations. They've been very positive, they've been fact-based, they, we've had discussions back and forth of our options and what our next steps are, and we've followed those steps to get to this point.
This discussion has been for information only. What do we do from here? Audrey, do you have something?
No, I, I don't want to get into that he said, she said, but I did ask Mr. Box that question, and, and it's my understanding that he said you needed to meet with the city and that that didn't take place. And so I think we need to use these next weeks to try to clarify some more things.
Rick?
Mr. Mayor, you know, we do have a representative from the council that sits on the MUC board. Why wasn't that person telling us what was going on?
Tom just got on.
Yeah, I would say that you just...
No, not you.
I, I, we can't answer that question, I guess, why, why that information wasn't being relayed. And I know we've had conversations after, after commission meetings with general manager here, and, you know, interim general manager Johnson, general manager Smith, sorry. With our council liaison after those meetings, there's typically a conversation after those meetings, and we've had everybody that's ever come over and been that person. We try to keep those lines of communication open. If it didn't get back to you, I apologize. I can't answer that.
I understand that. And then my other question, we have Public Works itself. And then my other question, we have public works that's out there in industrial work. How do they deal with emergencies? Because they have to go out at night, too, during storm. Say anything about that? Do we have issues with trains?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Fagerly, council. I will be perfectly honest and say, yes, trains cause delays. I think everybody in Wilmer knows that. It's especially frustrating when you pull up to a crossing and there's a train stopped, and then all of a sudden it backs up, and you don't know which way it's going. But that's just the reality that we've faced all the time. We go on Highway 12, we take the bridge, we typically go another route, or else we just have to wait. But we have been able to utilize Highway 12 for our equipment.
You notice today, because they were cutting trees, and there was a dump truck that went with the logs, and if they were on Highway 12, they went west towards Pennac. It must be cut off somewhere along with the bridge.
Correct, yep.
I was in Benson today, and the train blocked the rail crossing for 20 minutes. I couldn't, the car backed up. It is an issue sometimes. They have no bridge over there, so we're lucky. Then, is there any other land in industrial parks that they could look at if they're not happy with?
I'm sure that there is.
They haven't looked at any yet.
I can't answer that. I'm not aware.
Seems like no one's aware of anything, so must be a lack of communication.
There is a property just north of Jennio, which is a very desirable location. We don't feel that we should take that spot. We feel that Jennio should expand there if they so choose, so.
Where, where are you talking?
North of Jennio, there's an open property.
They bought that.
Are they buying that off? Okay. Off the table, then.
They have.
Yeah, we've been working on, on this property, or this project, for a very long time, and, you know, we had talked about the EDC earlier. At the time, we were looking at this industrial park site, the EDC told us that there was another industry looking at that, and they had a six-month period to evaluate whether or not they wanted to move forward. So because this has been such a long and ongoing process, things have changed throughout the time, and when we're looking to purchase real estate, to talk with everybody and get, you know, a feel for what it's going to cost, what the timeline is, eventually, property owners get wind of that, and it influences price. So, I mean, fortunately, right now, we're in a position where the price is on paper. But had we done this in a different direction, which you guys are requesting, it could have come with a different outcome. So I understand we're in a really difficult situation right here. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the questions that you're asking to try to get us what's best for the community. So that's, that's what we're here for.
We have been, I don't say debating this for an hour, but it's been about an hour reviewing the situation, trying to get to where we need to be. And I, I don't know where we're supposed to be because it's for information only. What do we do?
Well, it's up to the council. I think Robert gave you the three choices, but right now, it was presented as information only so that if council did want to make those motions, you were not going to influence whatever the council wanted to do. We do have to, you know, there's work to be done.
Mayor, members of the council, my belief here is that if there is no motion tonight, no action, and there isn't anything specifically recommended, this is, I expect this to be on the council agenda on April 7th, which would give staff for both the city and the utilities that amount of time to see if any additional information can be compiled or optimistically agreements reached on any of the key issues you've talked about.
Sounds like that's going to get done. I mean, if we just move on this for information only, we're going to get done what I was hoping we would get done before we took action.
That's correct, I mean, it's. I just want to say, I think most of the conversation tonight has been focused around a couple of things. One is that communication, which, before we started tonight, all of us would have agreed we can always approve that. I'll say that, like Councilmember Nelson, I had heard that maybe some communication that has happened had not happened, so I apologize if I quoted some folks that you guys actually have talked to in that process, and I certainly understand that you have limited opportunity to do that when you're negotiating a land deal. The other thing we've spent a lot of time talking about is comparing these two properties, which I think Mr. Marty Riley states, like, that's really not what this is about, you know? It's, the question is, the Wilmer Avenue property, and we wrote that down, it doesn't go into the industrial park. You guys will start the evaluation process again. So I, I guess I'm kind of curious, you know, where maybe some of my colleagues are, is staff spends two weeks trying to figure out what the next step is, unless, similar to what Councilmember Gardner said, unless staff's able to come up with what I think we thought was 1.6 billion last time, but maybe it's not, to extend the utilities to make this project happen, unless staff's able to find a way that is not from taxpayers' pockets or utility charges, I'm going to have a hard time supporting the purchase of the Wilmer Avenue project in two weeks, which maybe is what Councilmember Butterfield was thinking when he made his motion. I want to give the opportunity, but I'm kind of curious what my colleagues want to see in two weeks.
Thanks, that's right. I think I'd be interested in hearing from the planning commission, you know? I, I'm new to the job, I say that every week, so somebody, maybe I'll stop saying it. But what does the planning commission say as far as what the future annexation property to add to Wilmer looks like? Is this even part of it? Is it not? Are we, is the utility pushing us in a direction we don't want to go? Is it pushing us in a direction we do want to go? And if we do want to go that way, what does that look like? I just haven't looked through this yet, just got it. But I'd be interested in hear what, what the planning commission has to say.
All right. For information only, we'll move on.
Doug, Carl, did you have?
I was just going to say, Justin, I think you summed it up really nicely, and I'm with you, I, I struggle with the idea of trying to find 1.5 to 2.4, or whatever it's going to be, million that we don't have. And if we can find ways, or a way to do this, that's going to make this much more platable, but right now, it's, it's a hard sell for us to spend that much money that we don't have.
Could I ask a question? Is it, this, the hard sell is the, the drag cost to the city?
Right.
For the infrastructure or the location?
For the infrastructure, for me.
So if there was another option, if we could, if there wasn't a, a way to get with an agreement between utility staff and city staff to find that money, and would there be an entertainment for private services that we already have in our building budget that would not affect the project rates, or, I mean, it's actually a small part of the project.
I guess I feel that if we can find a way to make this happen at minimal cost to the taxpayer, to the consumer, then this is not a bad thing. But I don't know that I can commit to this if it's going to cost the taxpayer and take away from other things like street improvements or whatever that we're trying to do.
Completely understandable, and we, we made it well aware when we met with city staff last week that we did, absolutely do not want you to shortchange any planned project or anything like that to accommodate this. It's not what we're asking. There, there is an option, like, like other city entities have, would be to go with, with private water and wastewater service with the, with, as laid out in city, city ordinances, that with the understanding that if and when the city does extend out there, that we're going to, we're going to hook up. That's just how it's set up in city ordinance. So that would be the, I guess, the alternative to, to consider, is their appetite for private service.
And I, I don't know enough about, I'd have to get more information on that, too, so.
And I will say it again, I like that location because of the possibilities of annexation and extending services. Because I, I, there has to be something that trips it up to allow the expansion to go to the east, because that bypass is a, a real barrier to expansion. That's why I like it.
I guess I worry about doing private services within the city limits. Obviously, it sets a precedent for any person in the city of Wilmer to say, I don't want to hook onto the Wilmer Municipal Utilities power grid, I don't want to hook onto their wastewater going forward, and I don't think it's in your best interest to do that.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. I think also, the best spending product would be for us to be hooked up to city services. We don't want to be another airport, their own, their own system out there, and that there's challenges with that. It was, I'm paraphrasing now, but in city ordinance, it says if it's exorbitant costs or unreasonable costs, that you may permit private services. That's what we would ask here. If there, if there just isn't money in the cookie jar to do this, that would be what we would ask and pursue for this property. Until such time, the utility can contribute to the project, and the city's ready to move on it as well, and that may be 10 years down the road. And there is, like you said, there, there is a handful of private wells within the city still, it just hasn't been able to service them, so they, they do exist.
If we don't annex, and you guys put it in private, that's not our jurisdiction, jurisdictional decision to make, though, right? That's got to be the township's decision, isn't it? Oh, you county?
County will always have jurisdiction on any sewer system.
Okay.
With, even if it's in town. County's still going to have jurisdiction on sewer systems.
If we don't annex, it's not our decision to make.
No, but it doesn't matter. Even in town, what I'm saying, in the industrial park, if somebody doesn't want to hook up to the sewer, and it's right there, the county would have that jurisdiction.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for the information. Sorry it took so long.
It's okay. Thanks for having us.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Iverson Park Lift Station Replacement for Professional Services, Justin.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Good evening, council. The item in front of you this evening is a resolution awarding Iverson Park Lift Station Design and Construction Professional Services to Bolton &amp; Mink in the amount of $257,075. The Iverson Park Lift Station has been identified in the wastewater CIP for a complete replacement. The structure was, excuse me, originally constructed in 1968, has experienced flooding during rainfall events, and is now undersized to serve the area. It was identified as well in our recent rate study that council adopted last, late last year, so it is included in that. The only difference from this particular lift station versus the other ones we've done recently is we will be bonding for this lift station, so we will be taking out a loan so we can keep on top of this upkeep and then pay it back with, with our rates. I apologize, in your overview section, in the second paragraph, there is a timeline that I did not update. It talked about preliminary and final design being completed by June. That is not correct. Preliminary, preliminary and final design would be completed by year end. Bidding would take place in February of 2026, and the construction would start in the spring of 2026. So if you look farther in your packet, I believe it's page 146, that has the correct timeframe on it, just the, the overview on the, the sheet is incorrect, so construction actually would not happen until about a year from now. If council is agreeable to the first resolution, there are two more resolutions contingent on that, a preliminary budget, and then an intent to reimburse with the bond. So with that, I will stand for any questions you may have.
What is the expected life of a lift station?
I, anywhere from 60 to 70 years, I would say, currently.
Because this Iverson Park, that lift station. Late 70s?
68.
68?
Yes.
It was 68?
68 was the original construction, yep.
Because we had a, when Iverson Park came into the city.
Correct.
We had a, we had a knock-down, drag-out battle with 95-power coal.
Oh, sure.
For Iverson Park.
Well, hopefully, that's not the case, so.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
We need a motion to award project to Bolton &amp; Mink.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Any discussion? Rick?
So did we get any other bids on it, on this thing?
We did not.
No? So how do we know if it's reasonable or not?
We, I can.
We hope?
We hope. We haven't gotten, that's typically, since I've been involved, this is the direction we've gone. Obviously, if that needs to change, we can do that.
Who, who is the successful bidder?
Wasn't I?
Yeah, we haven't had them.
No, no, this is for the, for the professional services, we just, we have, have gone straight to Bolton &amp; Mink since they act as our city engineer.
I thought you were talking about award for constructing, and I didn't think we had that yet.
No, we don't.
No, we don't have that.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Oss.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to adopt the resolution approving preliminary budget of project number 2510A Iverson Park Lift Station in the amount of $1,495,300.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Oss.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Gilbertson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Next, we need a motion to adopt resolution for intent to reimburse project costs with bond proceeds. Nobody wants a motion?
So move.
Second.
Here we go, a motion and a second discussion. Anybody? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Oss.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
And Gardner.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Calling Jared Vogi, city engineer for project number 2505B, trunk highway 40 drain tile repair.
Good evening, mayor and council. Enclosed in your packet are the bid results for the trunk highway 40 drain tile repair project. We did receive bids on February 26th. Five bids were submitted for the project. They range from a low bid in the amount of $492,249 to a high bid in the amount of This project is a result of an agreement with BNSF. This project is a result of an agreement with BNSF to repair a, excuse me, drain tile beneath the Wilmer Y. Provided council wants to move forward with this project, there is a resolution in your packet this evening as well as the as-bid budget. And I would be happy to answer any questions that council might have at this time.
Jared, this sticks in my craw, they say, a little bit. BNSF crushed that tile and we're paying for it.
Correct.
Yes, I, it bothers me. Why are we paying for it?
I will defer to Mr. Scott, however, um, it's my understanding that as part of the agreements that went on during the Wilmer Y project, um, there was, well, the tile existed there. Uh, it's no secret that it was crushed or severed as part of that project. Uh, however, I don't know what the agreements back then were specifically. However, um, I believe as part of the purchase agreements, um, and I don't know if you have any additional insight, but as part of the purchase agreements, my understanding that that specific tile line was not disclosed. So that's my understanding. Certainly, that's up to Mr. Scott to collaborate.
It's all our money.
Agreed.
This was part of a, an agreement that was reached after the tile was damaged though, right? And we don't, we don't really have a choice on whether we do approve this project, as I understand it, right?
Correct, that was an agreement with BNSF. Also, yes, for, from the city, BNSF and the city of Wilmer entered an agreement for that.
The state was involved at some level too, weren't they?
They have their own agreement. I believe the county has theirs as well.
Yeah, the state and federal government were involved.
Correct.
Robert, you got anything?
Mayor, members of council, no, I have not, uh, been in the loop on this project. Certainly, I worked on those agreements at the time and I could go back and see what they say in relation to this issue, but I haven't, uh, provided any opinions recently whether those agreements apply here or how they apply.
I mean, we approved this to go out for bid, so I'll make a motion to approve the, the awarding of the bid.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion, and I will be part of the discussion. I really have a hard time with this. We, we got $1.1 million that we're going to spend on this project. And we're fixing something that we did not, it wasn't a natural catastrophe or anything that destroyed this. It was lack of knowing what was underneath where they were working and they crushed the tile line. No more discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Oss.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
And Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Next, a call for motion to adopt an as-bid budget for project 2505B in the amount of $606,920.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, discussion.
I just want to be clear, Mr. Mayor, you said this is 1.1, it's really 606. So you don't, can't add those two together. One is the construction and one is the professional services, right, Jared?
Correct.
So it's $606,000 total cost to the city. Just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Sholdes.
Aye.
Oss.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
And Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Motion passes. Jared, tell us about 2503B.
Sure, the second item in your packet this evening, mayor council, is related to project 2503B. Uh, that is also referred to as the West Street Improvements Project, includes a couple areas on the west side of town. Also, on February 26th, um, bids were received for that improvement. We received three bids, um, for the project. The project included a couple alternatives, alternate A and alternate B. These are related to the construction along Seventh Street and access into that neighborhood. The first alternate, alternate A, was to construct half of the street at a time. Uh, alternate B identified accesses through Regency and Valley Side, Regency, um, Mobile Home Park and, and, uh, Valley Side Town Homes. There are, there have been discussions with those property owners and they are agreeable to easements, which were incorporated as part of the alternate B. And, uh, just pending council's, um, action this evening on the improvement, city staff is recommending, uh, the base bid plus alternate B, which is the option to utilize those temporary easements and allow Seventh Street to be closed during construction and ultimately completed faster. Uh, there are, similar to the last item we just had, uh, there is a resolution in your packet this evening as well as, uh, an as-bid budget for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Your motion?
I'll move to, uh, approve, is it alternative two, whichever one you guys, uh, recommended, B, alternative B through the easements, through the trailer park and, uh, the, uh, housing development.
Do you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, discussion. Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Odens, could you give us an estimate of the tax implications for this project? Need to play some Jeopardy music while we wait. It feels a lot longer for you than it does the rest of us, don't worry.
Really rough numbers, but, uh, considering using last year's interest rate on our bond, it'd be roughly $105,000, $110,000 a year.
Okay.
That's, uh, there are a couple value, um, variables at play. That's using last year's assessment roll. You know how much was levied to the city, city costs and also the levy to the taxpayer on the assessment roll. As of now, our assessment policy stands the same, so, um, just those caveats there, it's a straight risk, what, what the bond's coming at. So roughly a solid 110.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Sholdes.
Aye.
Oss.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
And Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Now we need a as-bid budget adopted for 2503B in the amount of $2,510,100.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Oss.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Sholdes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes.
Thanks, council.
Thank you, Jared. Next is a Fisher First Edition Zoning Map Amendment Proposed Ordinance and Replant. Christopher.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, I'm going to pull up a PowerPoint for us in just a second, just to show you the, the map. On March 5th, um, planning commissioners, they met and voted to approve, um, or recommend that the parcels, um, 956308030 as well as 9563080860, or, um, you all may know this parcel as 425 and 427 Litchfield Avenue Southeast.
Is there a way we can get a smaller council member Nelson face and a bigger PowerPoint presentation?
I can just set my camera off, that would help. Actually, that might. No.
Doesn't help.
We're working on it.
Alright.
Okay.
Wow, it's pretty close to what we have in the packet though. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. La, walking bridge across the street from the old Domino's.
Yeah, you're correct. So, um, you're probably familiar with Ben Fisher moving the property from the corner lot, the, um, far east lot over to the western lot, just one lot over. Mr. Fisher is looking for to rezone the two corner parcels as general business three. And historically, the home that he did move over one lot was a triplex. In order to, he gutted it and so had to comply to new zoning rules. In order to go back to a triplex, which is the natural state of the building, he is looking to, um, rezone to general business three because he can do so with a conditional use permit. On March 5th, the planning commission did approve a contingent upon rezoning. So what I'm looking for today is a motion to set a public hearing for April 7th, um, of the two lots to be rezoned from R2 to general business three. And I'll stand for any questions.
I don't know who was first. Carl?
I guess I was going to ask, do we have assurances that he's actually going to do something with the building? It's been sitting there for years, uh, in a horrendous state of disrepair. What, what assurances do we have that he's going to do anything, that it's not just going to continue to crumble?
Mr. Fisher did share with planning commissioners and staff that, um, you know, this is, he had a different plan in the beginning and so this one that he came forward, forward to, um, staff, it seems more practical and logical and I feel like he can do it. He has said that this has been a roadblock, um, for his development needs that he needed to do. And so with this plan, if we do rezone, um, he should be able to get it done. Uh, he hasn't given us any assurance, any assurance, um, per se, but, um, you know, we, there's nothing we can really do to enforce that he complies with X, Y, and Z. Uh, so if he, if he's requesting it, we take this as case by case. Um, and we, you know, planning commission granted a contingent upon the rezoning passing.
Well, mine will kind of piggyback off of his. The house used to be a little bit more to the east.
Yes.
We did a basement more to the west, moved the house over, put it on top of the basement. Is that going to be on one parcel or is it, is the house? Because the way it looks from the street, it looks like it's in the center of both of those parcels.
So currently, the home is on the western lot. Um, the eastern lot, the corner lot, will be turned into a parking, um, a parking pad for the tenants of the triplex.
Well, it's not right on in the center of the lot.
Correct.
Did it used to be in the center of the lot?
I can't answer that, but, um, you know, if, if, if Mr. Fisher goes and combine the lots, he, he has the right to do so. So he could combine them. Yes.
Would this be a rental then as, as a residence or is he looking to rent it out to contractors or business or what?
It is a, he's proposing a triplex. My understanding that it will be three rental inc, um, units.
Christopher.
Yes.
The red area is where his rezoning is. Does that include the two houses that are east of the old Domino's and the old, um, what, there's a small business there, but was, um, Matt Stark had, uh, pro color graphics in there. Does that include all those properties?
Yep, so currently, you're looking at the current zoning for the areas. So east of the proposed rezone is general business three as well as the lots behind Mr. Fris, Fisher's property. Those are all general business.
This is a change in?
The two highlighted, the two green highlighted lots are being proposed to be general business to fall in line with the lots behind and across the street.
But the red isn't being changed?
No.
Okay.
You're correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Alright.
I'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing for April 7th, propose, for the proposed ordinance, the zoning map amendment.
You have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Oss.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Sholdes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you.
That motion passes. Thank you, Christopher. I'll have announcements, but I'm, I'm I've got something that, uh, I want the council to consider and due to recent disruptions of our city council meetings, I'm working with city staff, law enforcement, and the city attorney to develop some standard rules of decorum that if approved, anyone attending or participating in a council meeting will be required to follow. In particular, the issue of members of the public approaching the council table during meetings presents a public safety issue for city council and it needs to be addressed in a fair and uniform manner going forward. The proposed rules of decorum will address this and other basic issues to facilitate orderly council meetings. And they will be a, on a future council agenda for the consideration by the full council. That's for information only. We'll be working with staff on that. If you have any input, I would be, I would welcome it. Alright? Any other announcements? If not, uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.